Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome folks to the Town Council Regular Session for September 4th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And we will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor White, you can lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The item on our agenda is Roll Call, and it looks like all councilors are here, present and accounted for. Okay, moving right along. Item number three is Public Forum. I'm delighted to open Public Forum this evening. If there's anyone...
Can you speak up, please?
Of course. The next item on the agenda is Public Forum. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, now is the time. I just will remind folks that it is, that our time limit for Public Forum is three minutes per speaker. Three minutes per speaker.
And they have to be a resident or business associate?
Yeah. If you want to go, go ahead.
I do.
I will warn you when you have a minute left.
Why don't you run it on there?
It's not working. It's not working today. No.
Should have brought a stopwatch with me.
Oh, yeah.
Now, Piers is going to be a coalition where nobody's happy about pie, nobody's happy. We like ideas of nonprofits. You guys need to really research it. You guys all run by votes of the public. They're not happy. Tried to explain it away as our 26% inflation, and they're all governed by contracts on increases, including the union, 1% here, 2% here, 3% there. There's not much managing you can do. But you can do a lot, putting nonprofits in different areas, transportation, land development, everything that you guys are fighting hard about, knocking heads against the wall. You can do it with 501(c)(3) and foundations, foundation, over and over. I'm finding particular things that this manager needs for this town. So it isn't the least bad. You don't have to throw money at it when there are a lot of people hurt right now and getting them to be hurt. A lot of them elderly, your older folks. You just need to look around, ask a few people questions. Didn't really want to come tonight and tell you, but a bunch of people phlegm me and said, "Go stand up." Well, I guess they throw the person at it and it's had their hat out, right? Stand. You're all voted. They all know you. You're all on TV. We're all on eight, Channel Eight. Just have a serious discussion. This ain't as ludicrous about the three-minute rule. So we put 30, 40 people in here, three minutes each. They parlay to the speaker. Hold the floor for 45 minutes.
There's one minute remaining.
If it, if you go against it, parlay, Supreme Court rules. But he gets the point across, and you want a coalition like the dam? You said it couldn't be done, and you wanted to tear it down. What happened? I came in and put a coalition together. It's something easy to do for the old folks in this town and other people that aren't doing so well with this hyperinflation. It helps you. It makes you accomplish much more. It makes him work more efficiently. Just hear me out, okay? I'm trying to help. Learned sometimes just needs somebody to stand up and speak and forward the ideas and kind of let coalition talk among themselves. And, you know, they're the ones paying the bills, but it's a very small amount that's paying the bills. You're the collection agency of State New Hampshire, who the House and Senate won't step up and do the job, okay? Okay, let me change, okay? But it affects him. He can't do what he needs to do, the manager, okay? So I'm just, let's see if you guys will talk among yourselves about the problems, okay? And the rest of us don't have to show up and voice public concern, okay? Thank you.
Is anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Come to the podium and state your name and your address.
I have a handout. I'm here representing some of the old folks in this town who are impacted by many financial decisions. And I'm here to speak specifically about the elderly exemption, which we enjoyed for the last five years, but because we had...
Sorry. We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jan Knox, 505 Piscassix Street. Do you need my mailing address?
Uh, no.
Twin Rivers condos.
Yeah, that's good.
I lost my train of thought. Anyway, I'm 73 years old. My wife, Jay, is 76 years old. My friend Mary Beth is 73 years old, and our incomes are pretty limited. We were really, really fortunate that we're able to take advantage of the elderly exemption the last five years. But in the last five years, there have been three increases to my Social Security, which put me up over the edge, even though Medicare took most of those Social Security increases. Our income is about $4,500 a month from Social Security, $260 a month from an annuity. That's it. It's not a lot. So I was curious to know how you decide, how you settle on the amount for the, for the ceilings for singles and married people. When I was, when I came in and spoke with the assessor about this, he said that you looked at all the surrounding towns and sort of took the mean for that. So, oh, also, I have other friends my age, Jay's age, who couldn't come because they're working the late shift at Lowe's to make ends meet, to live in our little condo at Twin Rivers. So I went through Rockingham County. I got all of the data for, oh, but three, four towns, three towns. And as you can see, the average for single people for the ceiling is $40,846. If they're married, $57,400.
One minute remaining.
I'm sorry?
One minute remaining.
Okay. I threw out the highest and lowest, and it's not much less, because the highest was $80,000, which is great. And New Market comes in 38.52, which you can see for single is 2846, less than the average for all of Rockingham County. And for married, me, it comes at 54,707, less than the average for the entire county. So I'm wondering if anything can be done retroactively to change this, to increase it to the average for Rockingham County, rather than this sub-average amount, which really, really, really impacts us seniors. I don't know what else to say. You know, like, do I get, do I get the groceries? Do I get the medications? Do I take the dog to the vet? All of those, and, you know, we're gonna, the taxes are gonna increase. We all know that. They never go down. And we're living pretty much on the edge, and our house is not paid for, and probably never will be because we refi to lower our monthly payment. So is there anything that can be done to help us?
Council rules are, it's not a back and forth. It's only, it's only comments.
Okay.
So you shouldn't break, if you suspend the rules...
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the council to respond to that? I'd like to make a motion for the, to suspend the rules, the three-minute rule, as well as the rule to, for the council to respond to a comment.
We have a motion to suspend the rules to allow the council to comment during the second.
Requires two-thirds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're gonna vote. They have to vote.
If you could call the roll, please.
Council Gay, Glazberg.
Aye.
Council Lamontina.
Aye.
Council Doranbluth.
Nay.
Council White.
Nay.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Five to ten.
May I, goes the council response there. So the council, we just updated the amounts to the 38. We just did that recently. And I was the one that kind of authored what the value should be. It was based on 50 cities and towns. New Market, the 38, and the 52 is right in the middle of 50 cities and towns. I'll gladly share the spreadsheet with you guys.
So you're totally comfortable with that?
No.
If I'm allowed to. They only made a motion for the council to speak. Am I allowed to?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, and the other part of that also is, it wasn't just Rockingham County. We're actually more of an impact by Stratford County by, we have more to do with Dover, Rochester, some of it that we do with dairy, dairy. So, and we're also part of the Stratford Agential Planning Commission. So that was part of the reason. It was also look at those, those communities as well. It wasn't in a vacuum. It was done to try to...
I'm sure. I'm sure it was thoughtful.
Yeah, and it was, you know, it's the situation where the balance of what, you know, whether the individuals can afford it in your situation versus the individuals who are gonna have the, it's gotta be made up sadly. It's not something...
The what?
The money has to be made up. So...
I know. I was one of those people who made it up for...
Yeah, yeah. But I just want to say that was part of the decision-making as well.
Sure.
And again, we're, we're slightly below average now, and slightly above average with the married couples. So...
Yeah. Just respond. Based on the 50 cities and towns for that original spreadsheet that we had, the 38 and the 52, again, is right in the middle of the 50 cities and towns that we looked at. And am I comfortable with that? It's what I felt that the council would go along with at that time, based on the fact that if you do raise the exemptions, somebody else has to make it up, okay?
Well, of course, of course. I mean, we pay for schools, you know, like it's long gone. And everybody lifts the people who can't lift themselves, which would be me, these two, and other friends. So my question is, are you still okay with that? Because even though you included 50 towns, I mean, I just did Rockingham County because I didn't realize that, you know, it was 50. And just being right in the middle, why not be more kind and have it two-thirds in the middle? And I understand that other people have to pick up the slack. And I think that's fine, because we all pick up the slack for others, you know? I mean, that's what we do, or at least what we aspire to do. This is, I mean, I can't help it that Social Security gave me more money, which made it look like I had more money. But Medicare takes it all. So we have actually less money, and now we have to pay property taxes. It's, it's really hard, really hard. And honestly, I'm not sure what we can do, because we are such modest means. I don't know. So do you have any flexibility? Do you, do you have any ability to take a look at it again and perhaps adjust it up a bit? Because I don't know what we're gonna do. We can't afford to live here.
May I respond? So again, the council hasn't had an opportunity to discuss that amongst ourselves. And I don't want to speak for the council. We've got to understand that. It would have to be something that we'd have to take up again.
Okay. So how would I find out what you, what conclusion you come to?
That I will turn over to the pincher in the chair.
Well, I have to see if we can readdress it at this point in time, since it's already been adopted. If not, we can always address it for not, for the following tax year. In addition, we have not set the final values for the town as a whole. As the council will know, tonight, I'm going to be reporting that the assessor's gonna come in and let the council know what the final values for the town are.
Sure. But we know they're not going down.
No, but please understand, though, again, when the values go up, the rate drops. It's not on the same number.
No, I understand that.
And it's, and that's why we've been trying to educate the public too and say, "Look, is it gonna hit?" Yes, it is. Especially if you're in certain demographics of households. Might affect housing is one. I believe condos is another. Condos got hit harder the last time, but not as hard this time. But we'll know more on those values shortly. But...
The value of my condo doubled.
And we, and that's what we're, understand. Again, this is, we're not here to debate. We don't have all the information in front of us.
I get it. I get it.
So...
I can't even read your sign, because I can't afford...
Yeah.
...to get new glasses, you know? I mean, this is real. This is real life for, for a really large population in town. And I love New Market. I've lived here for 35 years. Not a townie. I'm still a newbie. But I don't know if we can stay. We can't afford it. And we've lived in this condo for 25 years. I don't know. I don't know what to say other than, don't make us have to go live in our car, you know? I mean, really, consider your elders, because it is our responsibility to take care of our elders. As much as you might not think that, or might not want to, it is our responsibility. And I'm sure you take care of your elders. But the town is loaded with people in our position, and it just doesn't work anymore. So that's that.
Somebody wants to speak to you.
What?
Somebody is raising their hand toward the chair.
Council Ward. Yeah. Like we said, we did raise it, and we are aware of the struggle, but that's the only reasons why we didn't raise it any further. I mean, you talked about the refi. One of the big people who are gonna be hit are the people living in mobile homes. Their taxes are going up almost astronomically, and that's something we can't control. And I understand how this must feel toward you, but we are not trying to do this to spite you. This is not towards...
I understand that. I understand that.
But, yeah, we're, we're trying to balance the needs of a lot of people who are struggling at this financial time. Any more money we allocate to you, somebody else doesn't. So I do understand the frustr, I understand how hard this must be, and I'm sorry we can't really, you know, give you any good answers. But, I mean, if we had a giant pot of money that we can, we would use it. But right now, we're just looking at this year, trying to figure out how we can keep things as low and cheap as possible to make things not worse. And we did bring, and we pointed out, we did, we did bring up, bring it up to the average.
8.57% increase for the single.
So I think that's about the best we can do at this point. And it's at a point in the year now, it's, I think it's too late. Even if we did change anything, it wouldn't come in into effect till next year. There's, it's simply too late.
I don't know. Is it?
Yes.
So it sounds like, I'm thinking, Councilor, it sounds like next steps here, Town Manager, you'll take a look at this and see if it's something that is possible to address or not, or whether it needs to be happened at the end next building cycle. And as part of that work, we're gonna wait and see sort of how the assessment shakes out and where those, where those ultimate tax impacts fall. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Knox, if you would like, I can provide you with the memorandums that we provided the council for the decision-making.
That would be great.
If you want to shoot me an email, send me an email. It's on the website. I don't know if this is...
I don't know who you are.
Oh, C for Nier. I'm the Town Manager. It's S for Nier, F-O-U-R-N-I-E-R, at newmarketnh.gov.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll give you those documents so you can see the rationale behind it, that we got to the numbers that we did.
NewmarketN Hampshire.gov?
Yep. And if you, again...
First initial is P?
S. Steven.
Steven. So you got...
No, that's okay. And if you, the next meeting, I will not be here, but the assessors are gonna present the final values for, for the, for the revaluation. If that's more information, you can watch it on TV, or you can come in and attend. It's not, again, it's not a question and answer. They can't change it either.
Right.
Because, but it's just you'll get the information.
When I went to see the assessor, you know, and he told me that I made too much, he told me, to make me feel better, I suppose, that he had seen another person that day or the day before on her 100th birthday, and her income was $200 over the limit. 100 years old.
Yeah. And...
And I know.
Yeah. And they say too, it's, it's not a New Market, it's not just a New Market problem.
I understand that.
It, you saw it in Exeter recently. I know, North Hampton's going through it, and they're, you know, a lot of the communities, I look at the higher ones.
Look at the number.
It's also, but it's also, also you gotta look at the income levels of those communities. There's a big income difference between North Hampton and New Hampshire.
Sandow?
And there is actually. Those are, those are communities now, suburbs of Boston and Salem, Wyndham, those kind of communities that you never think would have all been considered farm towns, but not.
Danville?
Danville is a, is a very rich community now.
$80,000.
It is. So it's just, it's what can be afforded.
Fremont?
Fremont, yeah. I don't know about that, but yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's one of the reasons that what they look at as well is what the incomes are. So...
All right. Well, if there's anything you can do for us oldies, we would much appreciate it. If you could, you know, to get it up to the Rockingham County average, we'd be happy. I think that would cover us. If not, I hope we can afford the wet cat food as opposed to the drought.
Thanks. You mean to yourself, for myself, not for the cat.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Unfortunately, we can only allow people to speak once for each council, for each public forum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, we will close Public Forum at 7:23.
I could do your idea. You're just not thinking out. I put your, your problem where your actual money is implied.
Mr. Allen, one.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And we've closed Public Forum for today, but I really appreciate your comments, and we'll take them under consideration. Thank you so much. So we are gonna need to move on, folks, thank you, councilors, to item number four. And that is for the town to consider the acceptance of minutes. And we have one set of minutes for this evening, and that is the minutes from August 21st, 2024. And I would accept a proposal to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion or changes? Okay. Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Glazberg.
Aye.
Council Lamontina.
Aye.
Council Doranbluth.
Aye.
Council White.
Aye.
Council Blackstone.
Aye.
Council Ward.
Aye.
Council Conley.
Aye.
Motion passes at 7:00.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And moving right on to item five on the agenda, to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignation. We have one appointment this evening, and that is of Scott McGrath to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee.
I will make that motion.
Oh, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Excellent. Mr. McGrath is applying to membership in the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. Council Lamontina, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Mr. McGrath actually attended our first meeting. He has an extensive background in recycling, which is one of the, the next things that we're gonna be moving on to. He seems like he'd be a really good addition to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Any other comments or discussion on Mr. McGrath's candidacy? Okay, seeing none, if you could call it off, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
I'm sorry, I have a question actually.
Oh, okay.
It says not registered.
He's going to talk about that next.
So I'm going to get in more to it now. We do not have a rule against people not being registered voters. If they were going to be on a statutory committee, it'd have to be a registered voter.
But not in an advisory committee.
Sure.
Okay.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dornblut.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. All right, item number six. We'll move right along to the report of the Town Manager and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is just to bring up exactly what you said. Counselor Lamatina asked that I look into committee memberships and how other municipalities handle it. There was a large cross section of answers. Most do require residency, but allow non-residents to serve in advisory capacity. They did mention some points which we need to consider. One, what if you have a non-resident that has, has a seat in a resident which is to serve after? Be careful of committee sizes. Having too many resident, non-residents will make it more difficult to get a quorum decisions being made. Of course, this is for advisory committees. Any committees created by state statute require residency and citizenship. I guess this is my, and I'm going to put this as a plug. There's a reason why we have rules. And it's because if you start bending them, you just should get rid of them. And if we, and I, and I think it's great that more people invite in. I think it's tough too, because I agree, business people should be, have impact, say, on certain committees. But I think we need to make sure that we don't, and I'm not saying for this appointment either because it's a certain, probably didn't register to vote. But we've got to make sure we have follow rules that we have. Because if we don't, and we pick it for pick and choose which ones we're going to follow and when we follow it, it can get us in trouble later on. If we say, well, we're not going to, we're not going to follow this rule now, but well, you followed it for the last person, why? That's the, that can be a difficulty. A lot of people, and one of the issues that they're having with residents and non-residents serving is staff members on committees. I don't allow staff members to serve on committees. Because we don't, we're here to carry out the policies of the, of the boards and the committees that, ultimately the council that makes those decisions. I know some other communities do have them and have them as voting members, which I would not allow. It's just, I just want to make sure that we, we vote, we, we make sure we do this. And this, I, this is not this appointment, any of them in law or by rules, that we follow them and we don't suspend them for every, because if we do, then we shouldn't have them. So that's, that's the only thing there. The next item is just a reminder, the state primary is on Tuesday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. In your schedule to work, I did put the scheduling in there. Would you need a majority at closing to certify the ballots? We are already beginning to work on the November election. I would ask counselors to try to be there as much as you can in November. We're expecting, as you can imagine, a massive turnout with an open gubernatorial seat and a presidential election. We're already working with the school. I've told basically non-essential staff that either it's all hands on deck or work remote that day. Just because this, the rec department is going to need to have overflow parking because the high school's going to be full of parking. We're just starting to, already get that going. The signs are supposed to be going up shortly to remind everybody about the election on Tuesday. And I did want to bring up another item that was not in my written report, but we've been seeing it pop, literally pop up over the last couple of weeks. And remind the candidates of RSA 66417. Code enforcement should have sent out an email to all candidates that no political advertising may be placed on any public property, including rights of white, that, that the municipality owns. State land, yes. Town land, no. I've seen signs in cemetery. And that we, we, the public works or code enforcement will be going out and picking up signs and there will be, we not to get rid of them. There's laws that we have to follow, whether we have public works until, until such time as somebody picks them up. It's, I haven't seen it this bad in a long time. We do not, we've never allowed campaign signs on town property. And it's just because if you put one, you have to put everyone. And even before I got here, that was the policy. So we're going to probably tomorrow stop popping them up. There'll be a public works and candidates will be able to pick them up there. So just wanted to give a update on that. And I know we did email all the state representative candidates. I guess that's more the local ones that we're seeing to remove signs from the public property. I did want to let the council know that on August 1st, 2024, there was an inspection of 10 North Main Street, which revealed water pools, soft ground, potential algae and scum, but no odor. 10 North Main Street above Schottmeier Park. So they've, testing that we conducted with Seacoast Analytical Services showed total coliform and E. coli levels high and indicated fecal contamination. The property owner has been notified that they must stop using their septic system to connect to the municipal sewer. That's the law. We don't have a, that's what happens when your septic fails and you have a sewer line there. They have to pump cap and test, the, the septic tank and remove the contaminated soil. Penalties for non-compliance include fines and the possibility that we do it for them and then go after the money. It's serious because it's so close to the park and the water. So this is just started. I just want to give the council a heads up because, just in case they're approached about that, that this is, we're following the letter of the law for the T. Just to let the council know that the NHMA has opened its registration for its annual conference. It's going to be earlier this year. It's going to be the 30th and 31st of October at the Doubletree in Hilton Downtown Manchester. The theme is From Conflict to Conversation. The event includes educational sessions, sponsors and exhibitors, and networking opportunities for municipal officials. And we need to register by October 16th. Please contact Wendy or I if you're interested and we'll get that done.
I like that theme, From Conflict to Conversation. That's a great theme.
I like that it's on Halloween too.
Yeah. It is a different, well, it depends on where you are in the state, whether or not it's on Halloween. Trick or treat some places the 31st. Next meeting, MRI will be here to present the finalized figures from the revaluation. We did receive an appeal of Mr. Clay's notice, which I attached to my report to the State Supreme Court. And I will be out of the office at the International City Managers Conference in Pittsburgh from the 18th to the 30th. I'll be returning to New Hampshire on the 25th, but I have off-site site meetings initially, getting ready for the municipal conference. The Director of Finance Administration will be acting Town Manager at the next council meeting. I did have one other item that you may have received a letter in your internal email, internal mailbox that I was made aware of House Bill 1014, which was signed by the governor and became law on September 10. Originally, it was a bill to make sure students were taught about civics and voting in class. It was later amended that if any municipality adopts a holiday, it has to use the day that is outlined in state law. So what does that mean? We don't have Indigenous Persons Day any longer. We have Columbus Day. I'm checking to see if we can add one above, if, if, as long as you're, you know, having one, can you add a second name to it? But it is, the other one is, we have Martin Luther King Junior Day. St. New Hampshire observes Martin Luther King Junior Civil Rights Day. So we just have to, the new law makes us have holidays reflect the state law. So we will not be used, as of right now, we're not using the term Indigenous Persons Day, just to make sure it applies to the law. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Town Manager. Any comments or questions for the Town Manager? Counselor Lamatina.
Of course. I want to thank the Town Manager for addressing the committee issue that I, membership issue that I raised. And I do appreciate the manager keeping us, or me, in line. Okay, I do appreciate it. I don't always do it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Blackstone.
You made a comment here that we are currently scheduling a meeting with DOT to review areas we turned over. Is, is this having Main Street?
Yes.
Go to this town from the state?
Yep. So what, where we are was, we were actually supposed to meet last week with the, with the individual from Concord from DOT. He got ill, so we're trying to reschedule that now. There was just some scheduling, but we are just still meeting.
Is this, just for my information, is this like a 10-year project or is this something that could happen?
It's already been a 10-year project.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to, so to be quite frank, we're trying to do it, there's two ways you can do it. You can have the Commissioner of DOT grant it. Or you have your legislate, member legislator, oh, you shouldn't, legislator adopt it, put it as a bill.
Yeah.
Going through the Commissioner, you don't anger DOT, which could impact projects later on by you, versus going by having a state rep or senator introduce it. It's more of a hard-handed kind of way to do it. We want to work, this is the furthest we've gone from a Commissioner. I can tell you, I mean, I had two Commissioners, I think there's been, I'm on my third Commissioner of DOT since I've been here. I've had two, talked to two of them in my office and we've never got this far.
Are they opposed to it or they just, this is so far down on your?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
District Six, which is the regional one, for some reason was opposed to it. But if you talk to the people in Concord, they're like, why would we not want to give up those to maintain? It doesn't make any sense to us.
Yeah.
There's even a formula that if they turn roads over and ever compact, we get funding from the state to maintain it. So it's still a wash. You know, they don't lose, we don't lose funding. They don't gain funding, but they just won't have to do it. It would be our program. So that's what we're trying to figure out too. It's, it's a lot, something's, some discussion in Concord versus the town in Concord right now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Blackstone. Any other questions or comments for the Town Manager? I have just one and that is, are there any actions sort of for the Town Manager, the Town Council, sort of regarding the Clay deal? Just for information.
Yep. Even when it comes up, it's, it's a Supreme Court case, so it's, both sides will argue why the law should or should not be applied to the situation. It's not even the merit of the case isn't heard. It's the law. So.
Okay. Thank you very much, Town Manager. Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments on the report, we'll move on to committee reports. So are there any committee reports this evening, Counselor Blackstone?
Arts, Culture and Tourism met yesterday and we've accepted the final design proposal from Alex Idrili, the artist for the mural for the Willie Park project. That will be unveiled on September 28th at 10:00 AM. So if you want to come down, there will be some music and some performance and the unveiling of that. That's September 28th at 10:00 AM. The interweave project that had been going around, going on around town where people were doing the small looms, feeding things through them and writing what the project or the town might mean to them, that's completed. We got a total of, I think, 63 people involved in that. And we have taken pictures of a lot of the different projects and we're going to be printing them and displaying them at places around town. And finally, the, on September 14th at 8:30 AM, the master plan envisioning session for arts, culture, tourism and the rec department. So it's going to be held at the high school, 8:30 AM, September 14th. There'll be, if anybody went to the last one, there'll be a conversation about where the town wants to head and what they want to focus on for the rec and arts. And you can voice things and be involved in it.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clayzberg. Other committee reports this evening? Counselor Lamatina?
Energy and Environment Committee met and we had an update from Stratford Regional Planning on the energy chapter of the master plan. I just want to reiterate what Counselor Glazberg said is that on Saturday, the 14th, there's a workshop for the master plan. It's open to the public. Come on down and, you know, hear what's happening. We're going to be addressing energy, arts and tourism, facilities, the town facilities and the riverfront. It'd be good for council members to be there too.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Ward?
I may not be there on the 14th. My sister's coming in from North Carolina. But, and apparently I'm driving her from Logan Airport. Anyways, the budget committee met on the 26th to hear the school fiscal year 24 finance report. The unassigned fund, fund balance to reduce taxes for financial year 24 was 400, $470,889, or about 0.02% of the budget. So, which means the amount, they, it means they were pretty accurate about what they budgeted to that year. They only had, that's all they had left over. They're estimating that they'll need at least a 3.2 point, at least a 3.23 budget increase will be needed to stay funded at the current level for '25, '26, or approximately $883,140. And that's just in order to do exactly what they're doing this year. And that does not include teaching contract negotiations, which is, but they are trying right now to lower that down to about 2%. Todd Allen and Jenna Mellon gave a presentation, they understand, from the school, they explained that they understand, you know, taxes are hard this year, so they're trying their best to, you know, not add anything extra. Like this is, this increase is just to keep them at doing the exact same level of what they're doing right now. So. Oh, and apparently one student in Newmarket went to the state Master Chef Junior and the competition and won. That's for like the state, I guess. Yes, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Other needed committee reports this evening? Okay, then we will move on to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading. And this evening, there are six, counselors. See, Mr. Malaski is just getting up and ready. Okay, then we will start with the first one. Resolution 2024, 2025 dash four, annual lease payment for two international drunk, dump trucks, not drunk trucks, dump trucks with plow equipment. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. And it looks like Public Works Director is here. Oh, yes, yes, he is, is going to speak to this one.
This is lease payment number four out of seven. We bought the trucks back in 2021.
If we didn't withdraw the capital reserve, we wouldn't be here and be part of the operating budget. But we built up the capital reserves at a time when we thought you could buy a truck easily. But by the time you have, the truck values have been going up so high that we're withdrawing the lease payments from the funds to do so.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, I guess my only comment is I support this. We've got the capital works, we've got the capital reserve fund. This is kind of, you know, part of what it's for. As you said, if we didn't have it, we'd be in the operating budget, but we already have the funds. So if there are no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dornblut.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. All right, our next resolution is Resolution 2024, 2025 dash five. That is the annual lease payment for trackless MT7 sidewalk tractor. I would accept the motion to approve that resolution.
So I will second it.
Thank you, Counselor White and thank you, Counselor Ward. And Public Works Director, again, please.
This is lease payment number two. We purchased this a year ago. They initially purchased it out of seven, so there will be five more payments out there. Same scenario, please.
Any questions or comments for Public Works Director? The same thing. It's from the capital reserve fund and we've got it. This is what it's for. Okay, seeing no other comments or discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina.
Aye.
Counselor Dornblut.
Aye.
Counselor White.
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone.
Aye.
Counselor Ward.
Aye.
Counselor Connolly.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Next resolution in the second reading, Resolution 2024-2025-6, annual lease payment for Engine 5. At this moment, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Glazier. And the Fire Chief, I believe, will be speaking to this one. So welcome, Chief Malaski.
This is payment number five of a 11 purchase truck in 2020. Last payment for the year 2030.
Any questions or discussion? I think it says here, Chief Malaski, but are these like, like, are these purchase payments or still lease payments?
They're, they're a lease payment. We could not tie the hand of the council with the initial purchase, so every year I have to come ask for the payment.
Okay. Thank you.
And at the end, I think it's a dollar purchase.
Yeah.
So technically, at the end, we have to give a dollar to purchase the agreement. Lease purchase, yeah.
Okay. If there are no other comments or discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazier?
Aye.
Counselor Lametina?
Aye.
Counselor Dorblut?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, we're halfway through. The next resolution in the second reading is Resolution 2024-2025-7, purchase of a Stryker Power Pro-Cot and two power load systems. I know what those are now. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Dorblut. And do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. And the Fire Chief would speak to this one as well.
Yes. So we have two ambulances, we have two power stretchers right now. What that does is the stretcher just goes up and down like, well, from the ground level. What the power load does, it actually puts the car in the back of the ambulance and takes it out. Everybody has gone to this system, we're kind of the last ones to go to it. Obviously, it's an expensive setup. And what happens is when we go mutual aid or we have someone come in, like, we had a major incident a little while ago, we were tied up at the hospital, Derm came in, they started, we can't take their stretcher and put it in our truck, vice versa. So it causes conflicts at bad incidents. And the great thing about this is there's no more lifting for it.
Yeah. It actually does impact our workers' compensation insurance as well. That was the initial, when they came in with the power stretchers, this helps as well.
Essentially, you bring the stretcher up to the back of the ambulance, it's two arms, there are no, you hit the button, grabs it, walks it in the back of the truck. You get to the hospital, push the button, takes it out. No more lifting whatsoever. So that's huge. And 76% of our injuries are from lifting with the back for the body service.
Thank you, Chief Malaski. Any comments or discussions by the councilors? Counselor Ward?
I've written about patient safety for a while and healthcare, so I just want to echo what Mr. Malaski said. A lot of healthcare workers end up with long-term injuries due to like lifting, just, you know, so I'm all for this. This is going to make it safer for people to get in, it'll keep our responders, you know, healthier in the long term. So I'm all for this.
Other comments or discussion?
I just want to add, the fund paid for this comes from the ambulance revenues. There's no tax dollars in the purchase. It's strictly off of revenue usage, so.
Other questions or discussion? I agree with Counselor Ward. If we can make the work that our team is doing safer, then I think that's a good thing. And as Chief Malaski pointed out, the ambulance revolving fund already has this, has this balance. Okay. I'm seeing no other comments or discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Sorry. Counselor Glazier?
Aye.
Counselor Lametina?
Aye.
Counselor Dorblut?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Fifth resolution, the second reading this evening. Resolution number 2024-2025-8, paving improvements. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion. Sorry, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lametina. I believe the Public Works Director is going to speak to this one.
So this is to extend, we're looking to extend a contract with Bellin Fleming once again. The roads on the list are listed there, Reoia guilty stone wall in Winslow. There's really no increase other than the materials for the price of the asphalt mix for the new wall and stuff. And there's a couple cul-de-sacs, so there's, those are very challenging, so there's a little change there. But everything else is staying status quo with them. We're hoping to get some of the stuff done before winter and then we may finish something in the spring. What we're looking to do is use the Municipal Transportation Fund and not the CIP because we're going to be using funds to do the bridge deck on Ashwell Bridge. That's going to be going out to bid soon, and that'll be something coming before you guys when all the kids are finalized. And that was something that was put in through the budget. So the only change here is we typically take the CIP money, but at Municipal Fund, that's why you'll see that it's the budget, operating budget in there and nothing from the CIP because we need that for the bridge deck.
Okay. Thank you, Director Malaski. Any comments or discussion about this resolution? Counselor?
Thank you. Could you just, just quickly explain why are cul-de-sacs more, what makes it more expensive?
They, they can't get material. It takes a very long time. You have to keep resetting, resetting, resetting. So they charge more because it takes, if you're going down.
A straight street.
You're moving, you're putting out mix, you do, but when you do a cul-de-sac, they'll spend half a day in a cul-de-sac. They're, they're not friendly with the paper.
Yeah.
So they make an adjustment because they, all the downtime.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? I did do a little bit of a drive around just to take a look at these and yeah, it's, they, they need to be, I'm glad that these, these roads are on the, are on the management plan schedule for right now. And again, the Transportation Fund has, has the balance and the rest, I guess, is coming from the operating budget, so it's already been. So that. Okay. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazier?
Aye.
Counselor Lametina?
Aye.
Counselor Dorblut?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
I really have to pay attention. It's like I'm going to miss my call. Okay. And our final resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution 2024-2025-9, and this is the purchase of two Ford trucks. And I will at this time ask the Public Works Director to speak to this one.
So these vehicles are in the capital improvement plan, they always have been, they're not add-ons or new. The good news is the F-150 truck, we actually hung on to it for a few more years than what we thought we would have scheduled. The other truck, we're not so fortunate with that one. But these vehicles, one's used to build a grounds division, one's used in higher division for moving equipment, movers, those types of things. But they're, they're not new to the, they've been in the fleet for years and years and years, so not, not different add-on vehicles or anything like that. It's a state bid price, McFarland Ford has the, has the state bid price right now. We should be able to see in December if we're able to place the order this week. One of the trucks unfortunately won't, won't put any money into it, we'll lose that in the September, won't pass inspection. So, but if we can get it by December, hopefully it'll be in good shape. Yeah, I guess that's real.
Any questions for the Works Director or discussion? Counselor?
The, the year on the trucks, one of them said 2012, the other one wasn't listed. What's the F-350?
It's a 15.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? And Director Malaski, again, this is coming from the capital reserve balance?
Correct.
The existing reserve balance?
Existing.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazier?
Aye.
Excuse me. We have not.
Made a motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you for, thank you for that. I thought we had. My mistake. I appreciate that, Counselor Dorblut. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
And I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Dorblut, and thank you, Counselor Ward. Are there, is there any other discussion? I'm just going to miss one. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Seeing that people call the roll.
Counselor Glazier?
Aye.
Counselor Lametina?
Aye.
Counselor Dorblut?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no resolutions or ordinances in the first reading. And we're on to new business and correspondence. Is there anything, any correspondence to be read to the record?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any closing comments by town councilors this evening? Counselor Ward?
Okay. So I just want to let people know about a new community service day I am trying to start in conjunction with the Historical Society and Cemetery Trustees to take care of untended cemeteries in town, Newmarket Cemetery Day. There are over 100 cemeteries in Newmarket, many dating back to the town's founding. While larger or more famous cemeteries are well-tended, that still leaves dozens of smaller cemeteries uncared for. Unfortunately, the town is unable to perform regular maintenance for these cemeteries due to funding, lack of resources, or because they are on private land without public access. These neglected cemeteries have become overgrown with brush and weeds without anyone to care for them. And if nothing is done, these places and the history they represent will disappear forever. As we look forward to America's 250th anniversary and Newmarket's 300th, I'm asking Newmarket citizens to come out and lend a hand to the first-ever Newmarket Cemetery Volunteer Day to tend to Newmarket's past as we look forward to the town's future. The Cemetery Day volunteers will help by performing lawn care at cemeteries selected by the Cemetery Trustees such as mowing, pruning, raking, and repainting metal gates. It is important to note volunteers will not be touching or cleaning the gravestones as the age of the stone requires special care materials to prevent erosion. After the Volunteer Day is done, the Historical Society will put on a presentation about the history of the cemetery, describing what life was like for Newmarketers, or is it Newmarketers, Newmarketers? It doesn't matter, during the 1800s. This is my first attempt at trying to organize a community service day, so I asked for patience while I work out what I'm doing. At this stage, I'm just trying to gauge that public interest or support for this volunteer project. So if there's anyone listening who's interested or has an opinion, please reach out to me at my town email, bward@newmarketnh.gov. Thank you.
Counselor Ward, has a, has a tentative date or aspirational date been set for this?
I'm trying to hopefully, trying to do it sometime before winter this year.